Good evening and welcome to the special presentations portion of the city council. Today is May 1st, 2018, and it's 5:10 PM. Our first order of business will be our business spotlight. And with us tonight is Culichi Town. If you could please play the video. Looking delicious cuisine, straight from Sinaloa, Culichi Town, is now open in Moreno Valley. We offer our guests Culichi-style sushi rolls and dishes, as well as mariscos, with a wide variety of flavors. We pride ourselves on creating the most authentic taste of Sinaloa. Culichi Town, bringing a traditionally unique taste to Moreno Valley. Well, I can attest that I've eaten there and the food is delicious. Culichi Town, sushi and mariscos is a family-friendly restaurant that brings the flavors and favorite dishes from Culiacan, Sonora, in Mexico, to Moreno Valley. Located at 23753 Sunnymeat Boulevard, Culichi Town and Sushi y Mariscos has been in business for seven months. They offer an innovative twist of Mexican dishes and fuse it with popular sushi dishes, like their signature Camarón Culichi, which has shrimp cooked in Culichi House salsa, served with rice and salad, and the Lupio roll, which has shrimp, crab, avocado, and a Philadelphia roll topped with crab shrimp bits, ciracha, and drizzled with sweet eel sauce. At Culichi Town, every dish is a party. Expect to be delighted by inventive, bold flavors, live music, and a good time with family and friends, right here in Moreno Valley. Today, we recognize Culichi Town with this business spotlight video, while we've already seen it. So if you could please come up. Representing the business tonight is Jesús Santos. It's my pleasure to present this business spotlight certificate and USB with Culichi Town. So this is your certificate, and this is your drive, where you can show your video on Facebook, on your internet, website, Instagram. Okay? Would you like to say some words? Okay. Puede hablar en español?
Sí. Okay. Eh, primero que nada, muy buenas tardes a todos. De parte del señor Misael Guerrero, quiero darle las gracias a la ciudad de Moreno Valley por abrir las puertas a esta gran cadena de restaurantes Culichi Town. Es un placer para nosotros estar en este lugar, ya que ha sido una experiencia magnífica de parte de la relación de amistad que se ha dado entre la ciudad y nosotros. Muchas gracias, de parte del señor Misael Guerrero.
And welcome to Moreno Valley. Bienvenidos a Moreno Valley. Our next business spotlight is Hyundai, and our mayor will present the certificate of recognition and the USB to Mike Brown, owner of Hyundai of Moreno Valley.
All right, let's give him a round of applause for Hyundai. Hey, congratulations, congratulations. You know, it's funny, when I first saw the certificate with the little, this thing here, I thought it was free car keys, I was like, aw, man. But then when I heard her say USB, I was like, aw, okay. But anyways, have you heard the big news? Hyundai of Moreno Valley is now open in the city of Moreno Valley, seven days a week, and it's located at 27500 Eucalyptus Avenue. Hyundai is the first new dealership in Moreno Valley in more than a decade, in over a decade. With over 300 vehicles to choose from, customers are sure to find Hyundai that fits their needs and budget. In addition to their vast selection of new and used vehicles, Hyundai prides themselves on their ability to provide assistance from start to finish. Their friendly and professional staff can assist in finding the right financial plan to provide the care of your vehicle at their onsite care maintenance and service department as well. Hyundai of Moreno Valley is also offering all Hyundai owners an opportunity to redeem a free oil change. Today, we recognize Hyundai of Moreno Valley with this business spotlight video. Let's roll the video.
Hyundai of Moreno Valley is now open seven days a week. With over 300 vehicles, we have the Hyundai to fit your needs and your budget. And right now, all Hyundai owners can visit our website to receive a free oil change. Hyundai of Moreno Valley is located at 27500 Eucalyptus Avenue, off the 6D freeway at Moreno Beach, between LA Fitness and the Stone Ridge Town Center. Get more at Hyundai of Moreno Valley.
All right, let's give another round of applause to Hyundai. Representing the business is the owner, Mr. Mike Brown. Mr. Mike Brown, would you like to say a few words?
I'd like to thank the mayor and the city council, and all of the individuals that have touched this deal over the last three years as we've gone through this process. The city has been extremely helpful and cooperative. In return, we had committed initially a 30% higher Moreno Valley residents, which were either unemployed or underemployed, and I'm happy to report that our number has drastically exceeded it. We're probably about 80% Moreno Valley residents. So we had such a talent pool to be able to pull from. So I'd like to thank, again, the city council for their support and everything that Mike Lee and his red team has put together. I can't say enough of how much it means to us and their cooperation. Everyone had kind of warned me about the bureaucratic process, but I did not witness that, and I always take every liberty to share with other businesses or prospective businesses coming to the area how supportive that the city has been. So, thank you.
And then, we have this beautiful certificate here as well, in the city of Moreno Valley, and a USB.
Not a key?
Not a key. Yeah, I know. I was like, aw, man.
Another shout out to Hyundai of Moreno Valley. The next presentation is a proclamation recognizing May 5th, 2018, as Cinco de Mayo. And that presentation will be by Mayor Gutierrez.
Okay, so today, we are going to be recognizing Cinco de Mayo. This evening, we celebrate unity across multiple facets of our shared humanity. People of all walks of life share the common goal of wanting to see our community thrive. In celebrating our cultural diversity, we celebrate the unique characteristics of each culture and the wonderful opportunity that we have to interact with and learn about other cultures. Cultural anthropologists often refer to the United States of America as a salad bowl, where many different cultures interact and each maintains their own individual characteristics, but all blend together to complement each other. It is in that spirit of fellowship and the knowledge of the inherent value of our cultural diversity. In fellowship with our southern neighbor, in celebrating an unlikely victory in the fight for independence, and in celebration of our own cultural diversity right here in Moreno Valley, the city council of the city of Moreno Valley hereby issues this proclamation and recognition of Cinco de Mayo. And it reads, part of it reads, that on May 5th, 1862, General Ignacio Zaragoza led a small band of Mexican troops to victory over the French in the Battle of Puebla, in the town of Puebla de Los Ángeles. And whereas, the May 5th victory of the Battle of Puebla has become a celebration of Mexican cultural heritage and a time for celebration of cultural diversity in the United States. So now therefore be it proclaimed that the city council of the city of Moreno Valley, on behalf of its citizens and staff, does hereby recognize May 5th, 2018, as the 156th anniversary of General Zaragoza's victory in the Battle of Puebla, and call upon all people to celebrate cultural diversity on May 5th. Okay, let's give a round of applause.
Thank you, mayor. Next, we have a presentation, or a proclamation recognizing May as Mental Health Month. And I will be doing that presentation to mental health, Riverside County Behavioral Health Commissioner Greg Dame Wood. Are you present? You are. Thank you so much for joining us tonight. Millions of Americans live with various forms of mental illness, whether it's anxiety, depression, or more complicated conditions that lack established treatment protocols. Many of the people who live with mental illness face perceived social stigmas associated with mental illness, and therefore face difficulty with seeking help with their problems. As more Americans discuss their experience with mental illness, that stigma will fade, and a greater number of people will seek treatment. As we raise awareness and increase the community resources available, we can collectively ease the hardships that so many of our friends, family, and neighbors face. Also, and so, the city council of the city of Moreno Valley does hereby proclaim May as Mental Health Month. Some of the proclamation reads, "Whereas, a person's mental health is considered to be an integral part of overall health and wellness. However, long delays often occur between the onset of symptoms and when individuals actually get help. And whereas, every person and community can make a difference in helping end the silence and stigma that for too long has surrounded mental illness and discouraged people from getting help. And whereas, the public education, the civic activities can encourage mental health, promote the wellness and recovery of those with a mental health condition, and help improve the lives of individuals and families affected by mental illness. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the city council of the city of Moreno Valley, on behalf of its citizens and staff, does hereby recognize May 2018 as Mental Health Month. All citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools in the city of Moreno Valley are encouraged to recommit our community, to increase awareness and understanding of mental health, and dialogue about the need for appropriate and accessible services for mental health needs of all people."
Thank you this evening. I really appreciate your time and consideration. I am Greg Dame Wood. I was appointed by the Board of Supervisors to the Commission for the Commission on Behavioral Health. The Riverside University Health System, Behavioral Health Department, and the Behavioral Health Commission would like to thank you all, the mayor, the council, all the city leaders, the audience, for this proclamation, as it demonstrates your interest in mental health, substance use, and so on. We know from local papers, news, and so on, as to the challenges that people face, especially in these times when poverty and so on are so many, there are so many challenges. Proclamation will be displayed the upcoming May as Mental Health Month. Resource Fair will have on May the 24th down at Fairmont Park. It's from 1 o'clock to 5 o'clock. You're invited. We'll feed you. It's a good time. And there's lots of different businesses represented also, such as IHP and various resources for those that struggle with mental health. So for more information, I've put some flyers in the back over here, and I've also sent them to the secretary for the board here. Again, my appreciation. I wish you all well. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is proclamation recognizing May 13th through the 19th as National Police Week. Councilmember Cabrera will speak and present the proclamation.
Good evening, everyone. Police officers across the nation perform difficult and oftentimes dangerous tasks in the line of duty every single day. Our Moreno Valley police officers, all these men and women standing here in the back, not only go to extraordinary lengths to protect the people of Moreno Valley, but they also enhance our community well-being through public outreach programs such as Officer Friendly, Coffee with the Cop, and participation at city events such as the Public Safety Expo that we held just a couple of weeks ago. In recognition of the contribution that our police officers make to our general community and the sacrifices that are an inherent part of being a police officer, the M on Box Springs Mountain will light up red and blue on Friday, May 11th. Additionally, the city council of the city of Moreno Valley hereby issues this proclamation. And Chief Carl Louis, if you could please come up, and if you'd like to bring up your troops as well. Give them a hand. Okay. The proclamation reads, "Whereas, the Congress and President of the United States have designated May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and the week in which it falls as Police Week. And whereas, the members of the Moreno Valley Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the citizens of Moreno Valley through the fulfillment of their duty to serve and protect the people of Moreno Valley. And whereas, the Moreno Valley Police Department has grown to be a modern and scientific law enforcement agency that unceasingly provides a vital public service. Now therefore be it proclaimed, be it resolved, that the city council of the city of Moreno Valley, on behalf of its citizens and staff, hereby proclaims May 13th through May 19th, 2018, as Police Week in Moreno Valley." Chief Carl Louis, would you like to say a few words?
On behalf of the men and women of the Moreno Valley Police Department, I'd like to say thank you to the mayor, Mayor Protem, and the council members, and the city staff for your help and support in this. Very, very heartfelt. Thank you.
Let's give our Moreno Valley Police Department another hand. Our final presentation is a proclamation recognizing May 3rd as National Day of Prayer, and our mayor, Exing Gutierrez, will make the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I'm actually excited to give this proclamation. We started this actually about a couple of years ago. We started to invite pastors, you know, to come out to the city council, and to really recognize this day as something that's really important in our, not only in our city, our state, but also the nation. And it's called the National Day of Prayer, May 3rd. We have some faith leaders from our community present tonight, and I'd like to ask them to come up here as well. If you're a pastor, please join me here. Pastor or associate pastor. So tonight, we've had several presentations, right? And many of those presentations had a unifying theme, and it was about unification, diversity, and being pretty much as one. So the national motto of the United States of America is "From many is one. From many states comes one nation. We come from many different cultural and religious backgrounds, yet we are still one people. We as a community strive to build a brighter future together by building safer and healthier communities and celebrating our common humanity. And these are the men and women that actually help us to accomplish this. Therefore, the city council of the city of Moreno Valley honors our diversity and our shared humanity by issuing this proclamation and recognition of the National Day of Prayer. We would like to bring more awareness about praying over our city, about praying over the elected officials, our government officials, the state, the nation. We need the prayers." So this proclamation reads, right over here, "The First Amendment of the United States Constitution guarantees every American the right to practice religion in the manner of their choosing, and many people find hope and strength in their individual spiritual practices. Whereas, the National Day of Prayer calls upon all people of different faiths, any faith in the United States, to pray for the nation and its leaders. And whereas, our city is diverse in its culture, and our citizens who come from a variety of nations observe an extraordinary variety of religious faiths and traditions, yet celebrate many uniting commonalities. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the city council of the city of Moreno Valley, on behalf of its citizens and staff, hereby recognizes May 3rd, 2018, as National Day of Prayer, and asks all of our citizens of Moreno Valley to reflect on peace, not violence, community unification, each according to their own practices and beliefs." Let's give a round of applause. And I'd like to just briefly recognize some of the pastors that are here. We have Pastor Cordero from the Adventist Church. Okay, thank you for coming. Pastor White from Sandals Church in Moreno Valley. Pastor Wilson from Lighthouse Baptist. Temple de Milagros, Pastor Lupe.
Pastor Dale Lockman, and thank you, mayor, because you gave me and our church a beautiful recognition for our 50th anniversary.
Yes, 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 yeah, they just had their 50th anniversary. So thank you, pastor.
Pastor John Nelson.
John Nelson, okay, thank you. New Life Christian Fellowship, thank you for coming. Okay, thank you, Moreno Christian Assembly, for coming as well. So all of these pastors are here today for the unifying theme of peace, love, not violence in the city of Moreno Valley. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, I appreciate that. Wonderful, beautiful how our community gets together when we need to, right? Well, that concludes our special presentations, and our regular city council meeting will start at 6 o'clock. Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the joint meeting of the city council of the city of Moreno Valley, Moreno Valley Community Services District, City Successor Agency, for the Community Redevelopment Agency of the city of Moreno Valley, Moreno Valley Housing Authorities, and the Board of Library Trustees. The city council receives a separate stipend for CSD meetings. I now call this meeting to order on May 1st, 2018, at 6:00 PM. The pledge of allegiance will be led by myself. Please remain standing for the invocation, which will be given by Pastor G. Nelson from Clearpoint Church. Please stand, face the flag, and begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, pastor, if you can go to the podium.
Our Father and our God, we thank you tonight. We thank you for your blessings. We thank you for your grace. We thank you for your power and your sovereignty. As we have gathered in this room, we ask... As we have gathered in this room, we ask for your wisdom. We ask for unity. We pray over our city officials, our mayor, our mayor Protem, our city councilmen, all of our men and women in uniform, our police department, fire department. We pray for our hospitals and our doctors, our schools, and our teachers, and our families. We pray, oh, God, that you would release prosperity and peace over this community. And for everything that is to be discussed tonight, place your hand of favor on it. May we leave here the better for having come. We seal this prayer in the name of our champion, our soon coming King, the Lord Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Please take a seat. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Gaiba.
I'm here.
Councilmember Marquez. Councilmember Cabrera.
Here.
Mayor Protem Baca.
Here.
Mayor Gutierrez.
Present. Uh, staff introductions, please.
Pat Jacquez Nares, City Clerk.
Marshall Ironman, Chief Financial Officer, City Treasurer.
Martin Kozanovic, City Attorney.
Tom DeSantis, City Manager.
Alan Brock, Assistant City Manager.
Mike Lee, Economic Development Director.
Rick Sandsmeyer, Acting Community Development Director.
David Kurlewicz, Chief of Police.
Kathleen Sanchez, Human Resources Director.
Fatty Solano, Acting Director, Parks and Community Services.
Michael Wolf, Director of Public Works, City Engineer.
Thank you, staff. Thank you, everyone, that's here for this council meeting tonight. Uh, before we actually move into the non, uh, the public comments on non-agenda, we do have our Emergent Leaders Council Student Mayor here, uh, that will be giving a report, uh, so, which is item, uh, H1. So if you'd like to... Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Protem, City Council Members and Staff. My name is Giselle Tapia. I am the student mayor of the Emergent Leaders Council. Um, a couple of things of our council, uh, that happened recently. We have gotten a new member, Cassandra Maureen. She is our first high school student in the council, and she is also the first recipient of our student recognition program. Our student vice mayor, Patrick Simones, will be graduating as summa cum laude from UCR. I'd like to share a little bit about the Emergent Leaders Council and what we've done over the last year or so. Our mission, as written in the resolution, is serving, connecting, and empowering youth and young adults to become future leaders while making a difference in our community. We are set up to have a council of nine members and two alternates. We appreciate the assistance being provided by our council liaison, Councilmember Cabrera, and city staff to promote applications for current openings on the ELC. We recently adopted a street for Keep Marina Valley Beautiful program with our first cleanup just this last Saturday. The ELC has a student recognition program for students who show exemplary citizenship in their school community. We, we were happy to recognize Cassandra Maureen from Canyon Springs High School with this award. Just re, um, just last year, after my Emergent Leaders Council report to city council, we had our first, um, student youth conference. We appreciate support from Parks and Rec for letting us a hall at the Cottonwood Golf Course. We had about fifteen students attending, two speakers. We also had Amazon Marina Valley College Youth Opportunity Center and ADT that hosted tables at this conference. We had three volunteers that assisted with mock interviews for the students to have a chance to practice an interview and get any advice from these volunteers. This year, we had our second youth conference. We had about twenty students that attended, and it was held here in council chamber. This time, conference not only included job readiness skills, it also had a motivational speaker to help students find their purpose. Speakers included Kimberly Scott, former ELC member and our first student mayor, Miguel Ramirez Cornejo from the Economic Development Department, and Claudia Diaz Carrasco from UCR's four-H Youth Development Program. Four-H, the Youth Opportunity Center, and the Employment Resource Center had hosted tables for the students to come and ask questions. Participants also had the opportunity to sign up for mock interviews with Miguel at the Employee Resource Center. We have also been working on content to create a webpage on the city's website specifically for youth. As a council, we participated in the following events last year in the July Fourth Parade with the Trolley Ride with the Mayor, UC College Night at Valley View High School, and we also participated with Councilmember Cabrera in the high school tours. After reviewing the vent, the events of last year, I'm looking forward to seeing the ELC establish some new goals and achieve them by working closely together. We would like to have an event to promote financial literacy among our youth, and we are interested in the issue of school shootings and bullying. We know that there are many anti-bullying efforts out there, and we want to do all that we can to support these efforts. I'm hoping that with the Emergent Leaders Council beginning to bring new resources to our youth, we can make a difference. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, and I want to let, if we could all give a round of applause to Giselle for, uh, being, uh, our student mayor for the Emergent Leaders Council and, and coming to make this presentation. And I believe this is your third term?
Yes, it is my third term.
Her third term in, in being the student mayor of, of the Emergent Leaders Council. And I just want to, uh, also commend, um, the ELC and, and the staff, uh, that did a great job in, with the youth conference, the most recent one I was able to attend. I know, uh, Councilmember Cabrera attended as well, and, uh, it was just really great. Um, it was nice to see, um, the students really engaged, actually more turnout, like you mentioned, it was like about twenty.
Yeah.
So there was more students than the previous year, and it was like a, a variety of different students, so I thought that that was really good. And I really liked, um, the, uh, Employment Resource Center's presentation. I thought that was a really good one about how to, uh, you know, get a job, keep a job, you know, and those kinds of things. I thought that was really good. So thank you so much. Um, I'm gonna go ahead and just say if anybody has any questions for our student mayor or...
Uh, Giselle, I just want to say, um, I don't have any questions. I, I just want to say congratulations and keep up the great work. I know that you're gonna go far. You know, when, when we look down the line, I know you'll be someplace, and you'll be somebody. Just keep up the good work, and most importantly, be a mentor to, uh, the younger kids that are coming up from high school. And, um, as you get older, you know, keep mentoring the youth, because we need lots of mentors, and our, our youth are gonna depend on you and look up to you. So thank you very much for what you do, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay.
Councilmember Cabrera?
Thank you. Uh, Giselle, I just want to say, uh, also, thank you for what you do, uh, you know, as a student mayor, and I've just been, been glad to be able to sit at the table with you and Shanna and, and the rest of the, uh, Emerging Leaders Council. Uh, you did mention that you would like to explore, uh, the financial literacy and also the pu- bullying. Um, you know, you have my full support. Just let me know what you need, and, and I'll be there for you guys.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Gaiba?
Hi, Giselle.
Hi.
We have a unique relationship in which you and I attend a lot of functions together. I want to say, your professionalism is impressive to me, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Give another round of applause.[1081.41][1081.44](applause). Okay, um, just a friendly reminder to everyone, we currently do have translation services in the back, uh, so if you do need, uh, that service, uh, it's right there in the back. Um, I wanted to remind anyone in the audience that may not have had a chance to review the agenda, uh, that the fireworks permit item has been taken off the agenda, and that there is no new date for it to be considered by the city council. Before we hear public comments this evening, I ask and encourage everyone participating to keep their comments respectful towards others, especially towards the individuals at the podium speaking. Finally, I ask that speakers bear in mind that comments aren't limited to three minutes for each speaker, and that you refrain from duplicating comments already made by others. Public comments on matters on the agenda will be taken up as the item is called for business between staff's report and city council deliberation. Those wishing to speak on items not on the agenda may do so now. Those wishing to speak should complete and submit a blue speaker slip to the bailiff. There's a three-minute time limit per person. All remarks and questions shall be addressed to myself or to the council as a whole. The city clerk will also call three names at a time. Please move to the front of the room when you hear your name called. In order to preserve the meeting decorum, councilman staff will not respond during public comments. Any council comments or questions to staff will be addressed during the council closing comments. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers?
We have one on non-agenda items, Kenny Iglesias.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, staff, and fellow residents. I have six things to talk to you guys about. The first thing is continuing with the TV, and this will be just the final question. Is it 4K and HDR? And the second thing is how many fire hydrants does the city have? And does the city have a color-coded system for each of them? And third thing is the fiber optic internet. I heard that Spectrum is trying to have fiber optic internet within the entire San California area. I would wish to encourage the city council and the mayor to continue to have more fiber optic internet within the city of Marina Valley. Fourth is, can you guys please put the agenda back to twelve days before the city council meeting? And fifth, can you guys please untable the decision, the study, to add more elected officials? And sixth, is the bottle of water? If, like, the next council meeting will be the day before my birthday, and the second thing, if I could get a bottle of water with all of the council members and the mayor's signature? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Next speaker? Do we have another?
Roy Blackard and Luis Palomares.
Okay, if you, uh, you could be, uh, ready? Roy's always ready.
Roy was born ready. Uh, like the idea of the police contract, the 1-1-1 with a one-year opt-out. Uh, sounds kind of familiar, and running a city is really not that complicated. You know, it, it does give you some options. You do, uh, have the ability to look at things, renegotiate, do your own police department if that's where you want to go, form a JPA. Uh, things are really simple when you break them down. They're not that complicated. Next thing I'd like to talk about is, uh, I would look favorably at the new proposed weed tax, and especially if it steps up in three years, under two provisions. One, that the tax is dedicated to public safety, and the second, we take a three-year approach, and the council also puts simultaneously on the ballot where we eliminate the utility tax in three years. Someday, I think four of you have campaigned on cutting taxes and cutting the UUT specifically. It's time for that to happen. We've raised the hotel tax. We could have passed that as a dedicated tax to public safety, as I advocated and said I would support if it was done that way, which it could have been, because the pass was seventy percent. You have the option to do it again. We can fund this and let the free market work. If we're, if we just keep passing taxes on top of taxes on top of taxes, you get California, where we've had net migration out for fifteen years, we've had a loss of business, most of it is because of overregulation and overtaxing, and the biggest percentage of people that have left California earn between a hundred thousand and two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars a year. And just as the Trump tax cuts have shown and the dropping of regulation, look what it's done to light off the US economy. It works. It worked in North Dakota, number one in quality of life. It said, "All this stuff is not complicated, it just takes the will to do it." Just as it will take three votes to put the weed tax on, it only takes three votes to put the repeal of the utility tax on. And I think three votes can lower the utility tax at any time. So we need to look at things. Efficiency all, all across the board. Uh, Mayor Jeff Yehud of Calamasa dropped one million dollars off of a five-million-dollar general fund in Calamasa by revamping the fire department. That's a twenty percent savings across a general fund budget on one item. It can be done, we need to do it.
Thank you, Roy. Next speaker? Okay, Luis Palomares, any other, um...
Sure.
Okay. Oh, that's, wow, not, not many speakers there.
Hello, Luis Palomares, community activist here. You know, I went out, um, golly, on Saturday because they had a recall going on, and Marcus keeps on saying he's not involved in any of that. He's been caught through the city with, meeting with, uh, Price, Ladonna, the Reverend, um, Denise Fleming, all the clan. Anyway, so, you know, we seen him, we were over there at Coco's. We seen him, and I got a picture of hi- him right here, nice and big. I want the camera to see up, see it all. Maybe they don't got to see me, but I want them to see this. Anyway, wow, it's not coming out right. Do you got that? Okay. Anyway, he's involved. Here he is, right here, it's pretty blurry, and here's a recall. Come on, Marcus. You know how Lindsey was there, Robinson, that, uh, Makado, Jerry Makado guy was there, you know? I approached him and asked him, you know, "How are you doing this? Why don't you just run for the seat like you did last time?" The only way him and Ladonna could get in is on a recall. It's a shame. You're a council member. I mean, this is beneath the council members, you know? How do you do this? It's very unbecoming. You're supposed to represent the community, not out there involved with recalls. You were involved in the last recall when it was of Tom Owens and the one with Victoria last time, and here you are again, all in the swamp with them. I don't get it. When are you gonna, you know, stop this nonsense? Yeah, there you are. I was gonna hand out some, uh, flyers here at the council, but I didn't get them in time, so I guess that's that, but i- it's just, it's, it's a lot of money, tax dollars. We paid thousands and thousands, a couple of hundred thousand on the last recall we had here. It cost us, the taxpayers here of Marina Valley, on recalls, because the swamps, the swampsters, Ladonna Jensen and all them can't get in on their own merit, 'cause she's around several times, but only on a recall. She could come in through the back door like the political prostitute she is. It's a darn shame, and I guess when they put their name on that next, uh, if, if they beat, if they get it, the recall, if they put it on, who's gonna, who's gonna get the seat? Are they gonna fight over here? Ed, Ladonna, a- and Makado, Jerry Makado? You know, there was a nice lady over there with him at that re- at the recall, when, when, very nice, she didn't even know what's going on. She didn't even know who, who he was in the beginning. You know, and they use people like this, and it's so sad. Well, you know, they use people like this. You were there, your truck was there. God, come on, Marcus. Uh, uh, you know, y- y- you're a fake, phony, and a liar. When are you gonna stop? When are you gonna leave our city alone? When are you gonna stop this? Do your job. Last week, you did a great job. No, can't you keep it up like that? You know, while Gaiba ride here, you know, that's another story for another day, but come on, you want to fly with the buzzards or, or go with the eagles? I don't know what you want to do here. You know, this is gonna cost us lots of money again.
Thank you, Luis. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, so any more speakers?
No more speakers.
Would any councilmembers like to make their reports and comments at this time? No? Okay. We are now going to, uh, move to our joint consent calendar, sections A through D on the agenda. All items are listed. Under the consent calendar sections A, B, C, and D are considered to be routine and non-controversial and may be enacted by one motion unless a member of the council, community services district, city successor agency, or the board of library trustee requests that an item be removed for separate action. The motion to adopt the consent calendars is deemed to be a separate motion by each agency, agency, and shall be so recorded by the city clerk. Items withdrawn for reporter discussion will be heard after public hearing items. Uh, and I just want to report that item A16, we do have a report from, a brief report from our attorney.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Protem, councilmembers. Just very briefly, the item is an amendment, um, number twenty-seven and twenty-eight to District 201, 401, and we just want to make it clear that one motion will cover both resolutions, both amendments. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, all right, if, uh, any items, uh, to be removed, please, uh, press your button. Okay, uh, Councilmember Marquez?
Uh, eight, A8 for a question.
Okay, A, A8, okay.
Eight and A14 for a question.
And A14. All right, so we'll start with, uh, A8. Uh, all right? And that is, let me just see which one is that one? Adopt a resolution approving an application for access to a state and federal summary, criminal history information for employment volunteers and contractors. Um, okay, Councilmember Marquez?
Uh, who?
That's, uh, financial, uh, so Marshall.
Marshall, okay, Marshall, you're on the spot now. Question I have is, once this is adopted, is it retroactive? Or is it from this? Or is it from this point out that we do the backgrounds for employment volunteers?
Uh, with regard to this item, this really correlates to the live scan being submitted to the F B I in relation to the commercial cannabis permits. Uh, so this just correlates in that one area. Any other prior volunteers would have been other, under previous considerations.
Okay, that's, that's the only question I had on that one.
Okay, and then the other one was A fourteen? That you had a question, and that is on?
City manager, I believe, Tom?
The asset forfeiture funds?
O- on this equipment, when we purchase it, is this gonna be an asset of the city or is it stay with the police department?
These will be assets of the city.
Okay. Okay, that's, that's, I want to make sure. Thank you.
Okay, Madam Clerk? Any, uh, public comments on consent items?
Yes, sir, Kenny Iglesias.
Oh, okay.
Hello, Mayor, councilmembers, staff, and fellow residents. I just came to say that I support number eleven and number fourteen. Thank you.
Thank you, Kendrick. I entertain a motion by council to approve, uh, the consent calendar.
Move second.
A move by, uh, Councilmember Gaiba, second by Marquez. Councilmember Marquez, please vote. And it's approved five, uh, zero. We're gonna go to public hearing items. Questions or comments on the public, wait, from the public on a public hearing matter are limited to five minutes per individual and must pertain to the subject under consideration. Those wishing to speak should complete and submit a golden rod speaker slip to the bailiff. We'll go ahead and start with E one, which is public hearing to adopt the consolidated plan for fiscal years twenty-eighteen through twenty-two, twenty-three, and the annual action plan for fiscal year twenty-eighteen slash twenty-nineteen. And we'll have a report of, uh, Marshall, from Marshall Ironman?
Yes, good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, city council members. With regards to this item, the U S Department of Housing and Urban Development, otherwise known as HUD, requires that the city prepares a consolidated plan every five years and an annual action plan every year as a condition of receiving federal funding under the Community Development Block Grant, which is the C D B G program, the Home Investment Partnerships, and the Emergency Solutions Grant or the E S G Grant Program. Uh, the consolidated plan is the planning document that provides the foundation for the annual action plan. The annual action plan then identifies how the C D B G home and E S G program funds will be utilized by the city. This plan is developed based on the public meetings, public hearings, finance subcommittee meetings, and ultimately the city council's direction. Uh, the last public hearing was conducted with, with the city council on April seventeen to determine the allocation of these grant funds. Tonight's final public hearing sets forth those council recommendations and any final public input before submitting these items to HUD. Uh, and those funding re- recommendations are set forth in attachment three to the staff report. Uh, if you would like, I could paraphrase the C D B G home and E S G allocations, uh, otherwise that would conclude my report.
Thank you, Marshall, uh, for the report. Any council questions of staff, uh, please, uh, press your, your request? Okay, seeing none, I'm gonna go ahead and open the hearing. Any public, uh, testimony, Madam Clerk?
Yes, we have two, Jessica Munoz, followed by Roy Blackard.
Okay. And we'll go ahead and have, uh, three minutes each.
Good evening, Mayor and council members, my name is Jessica Munoz from Voices for Children.
Good evening, Jess.
And it was very important to us to come one more time to thank the city, um, with our heartfelt gratitude for your previous partnership with our program in the last years through the C D B G funds, and to respectfully request that the city continue to invest in the children and foster care we serve through this very important program. Voices for Children is the court-appointed special advocate or CASA program for Riverside County. What that means to Moreno Valley is that we are the only nonprofit organization authorized by the court here to recruit and train and support very special volunteers who advocate for children and foster care in court, in school, and in the community. We think our CASAs are very special, but we also know that they're unique. They're unique for a couple of reasons. CASAs are volunteers, so unlike many of the caring but overwhelmed social workers and professionals who are serving the chil- children in foster care, um, they are not paid for the advocacy and services that they provide, and that is of particular interest in the cases of the older children that we serve. Also, unlike many of the other individuals involved with children and foster care, they are specifically focused on one child or one sibling group at a time. So their attention isn't divided among a large caseload as it is for our social workers, attorneys, and judges. And just briefly to illustrate for you how unique our CASAs are, one of our CASAs recently was having lunch in a fa- fast-food restaurant with her young lady, having a conversation that might be similar to a conversation some of you have had with an adolescent at one point or another about how important school is. And the young lady got up for a second, and a young man at the next table asked our CASA if she was the young lady's mom. And the CASA said, no, I'm just her friend. And he said, oh, are you her CASA? And she said, no, I'm s- I'm just a friend. Um, but she, I'm sure, had a very shocked expression on her face. And the young man said to her, well, I had someone in my life that used to talk to me like you're talking to her now, and she was called a CASA. And I was too stubborn then to listen to her, but because I could never get her words out of my head, I recently re-enrolled in community college. And our volunteer told us that he was probably in his mid-twenties, so he may not have even had contact with his CASA for eight or more years. But through her efforts, she was able to plant seeds in that individual, and he was able to make a choice to improve the quality of his life. We do our best to nurture our CASAs' ability to plant seeds in the children that we're serving in Moreno Valley now, and we thank you very much for the resources that you make available for us to be able to continue that important work. So thank you for your partnership, and we certainly hope to work with you in the coming year.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Munoz, uh, for coming today and, and sharing that wonderful, uh, touchy, uh, s- uh, story, you know, of, of the gentleman. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to see on the, uh, on the action plan, a real look at, uh, senior housing, because I think we have a real shortage of it in Moreno Valley all across the board, and I think especially fifty-five and up, uh, I don't see a lot of criminals, murderers, robbers, and stuff from fifty-five and older people. I think they add a lot to the community, and we have a real shortage, I believe, of senior housing that we don't look at. I believe that there's a project, uh, that may be in danger of not getting built, because overall, we don't look at the land uses that we'd be, would be conducive in the city to make it work. Again, we have a general plan, or I thought we had a budget for a general plan update, that I have not heard any action going on or any movement on. I think all across the board, we can look at putting more low-income housing in, more senior housing in, more affordable housing in. Not cheaper housing, more affordable by dropping rules and regulations and letting the builders build. They do not have to build high-density, high-output housing if we put the proper policies in. Suburbia is not dead unless the government and public policy kill it. And if you kill it, you're going to do so at your own peril, because look at the Legislative Analysts' Study of two thousand and fifteen. When you stack high-density, high-occupancy housing, you have a lower quality of life, and you get reduced test scores in children. That's not Roy talking, that's the Independent Legislative Analyst Office. So you should look at when you're approving all these things, and when you're approving projects, and when you're using especially our taxpayers' money, look at using it in the best and wisest position, especially for our community in Moreno Valley.
Thank you, Roy, for the comments. I'm gonna go ahead and close the hearing. No more, uh, speakers?
No more speakers.
Okay, any council deliberation, please, uh, press your request? Okay, seeing none, I entertain a motion by council to approve staff's recommendation numbers two and three.
I'll move it.
Okay, motion by?
I'll second.
Mayor Protembaka, second by Gaiba, Councilmember Gaiba? Please vote. And it's approved unanimously. We'll go ahead and go to item E two, public hearing for four national pollutant discharge-elimination system mail ballot proceedings, and we'll have a report of, uh, Public Works, Michael Wolf.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of the council, thank you. This item before you this evening is a public hearing, uh, for, for mail ballot proceedings for the National Pollutant Discharge-Elimination System, or M P D S. I'll ask our special districts division manager, Candace Castle, to give the report and make sure we don't miss any steps.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of the city council, Candace Castle, special districts division manager. This item is a public hearing for four property owner mail ballot proceedings for the M P D S program. The National Pollutant Discharge-Elimination System is a federally mandated program to control pollution of stormwater runoff. As a condition of approval to develop their property, the four property owners are required to provide a funding source for the M P D S program. Funds collected for the program will offset increased costs the city will incur as a result of the projects. The property owners have requested the city apply a parcel charge onto their annual property tax bill to secure the funding. Before the city can do so, however, the property owners must first approve the M P D S rate through individual mail ballot proceedings. The city clerk can open and count the four ballots after the city council conducts the public hearing. Each of the property owner's ballots will be counted individually to determine whether or not they have approved inclusion of their respective properties into the program. If a property owner approves the ballot, the parcel charge will be applied to the property tax bill of only the parcels identified on their ballot and will not impact any other property. Staff respectfully request the city council conduct a public hearing, and upon its close, direct the city clerk to open each ballot and announce the results for each. And, Mayor, that concludes my presentation, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much, Candace. Any council questions of staff? You've seen that there's no requests, I'm gonna go ahead and open the hearing. Okay, Madam Clerk, any, uh, public testimony?
None.
I'm gonna close the hearing. Seeing that there's no council deliberation, we'll go ahead, entertain a motion to, by council to approve staff's recommendation numbers two and three, which is to direct, uh, the city clerk to open and count, and then verify and accept the results. So let's, we'll do that one first.
I'll move that.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Gaiba?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Marquez. Go ahead and, uh, please vote. And then it's approved, so we'll go ahead and have, uh, take about thirty seconds or a minute for our city clerk to go ahead and approve, I mean, count it. Are there many, Pat?
There's just four, I'm on my last one.
Okay, okay. No rush. I just didn't want you to, I mean, if it was like a hundred or, you know, or several, we could take a break.
All ballots, um, for Continental, one was sent, one was received, and they said yes. For Cactus Commerce, one was sent, and they said yes. Um, Alyssa Moren- Moreno, one was sent, and they came back with a yes. And Metric Homes, one was sent, and they came back with a yes.
Okay, so all yes, okay. I entertain a motion by council to approve staff's recommendation numbers, uh, actually to, numbers four and five, actually.
So moved.
Okay, moved by, um, Mayor Protem, uh, Baca, second by Councilmember Marquez. And it was Baca and Marquez? Okay, please vote. It's approved. We'll go ahead, um, go straight to reports. Mayor Protembaka for Joint Powers Commission?
That was quick. Uh, tonight I'm providing an update from the recent March Joint Powers Commission meeting held on April twenty-fifth. In that meeting, the commission approved advertising for bids to construct the Van Buren from Village West Drive to Barton Road. We also transferred a hundred and sixteen acres to Meridian Park L L C to develop the Meridian West Lower Plateau project of about two million square feet of distribution buildings. And finally, we heard the report on the J P A's development applications, infrastructure projects, parks, and the general plan update. That concludes my report.
We have a report by, uh, Councilmember Marquez, who serves on the Riverside Transit Agency, R T A, Councilmember Marquez?
Thank you, Mayor. On Sunday, May thirteenth, R T A will adjust several routes to improve connections. Among these changes, R T A will provide later service aboard commuter link two-hundred for customers waiting to catch the Disneyland fireworks show and the parades before heading home. Please review the service change guides available inside of all the buses for further details. In addition, Route two-hundred is a good alternate to get to Angel Home Games to avoid the expense of parking or post-game traffic congestion. This, this stop is only a ten-minute walk from the stadium. Buses arrive and depart every hour on weekdays and every two hours on weekends up to ten o'clock. That concludes my report.
Thank you, council member. We also have a report, uh, by Councilmember Gaiba for the Western Riverside County Regional Conservation Authority.
Actually, we don't, that won't be till the seventh.
Oh, okay, it had an on, okay, all right. City managers' report?
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of the council, uh, just a few items. Um, I want to, uh, to, to remind the residents that the city takes great care to keep all of them informed about, uh, their, what their city's doing for them each day. Uh, several of our regular communication tools are proving particularly effective in reaching tens of thousands of readers. First one I want to touch on is our monthly City Link publication. Uh, it appears on our website, and May's edition is about to be posted, so stay tuned. Secondly, uh, each week we email the Moreno Valley at Work publication to nearly seventy-five thousand, uh, residents and businesses. Uh, that's quite a mailing list, and they're throughout our community. The, uh, publication is tight, it's bright, and it's informative, and I would encourage residents to sign up on our website to be added to the email list for each week's edition. And lastly, we have completely revamped the monthly city, city managers' report. Uh, it's now a much easier read, it's much shorter, uh, and is, uh, visually very interesting while spanning topics of greater relevance to our community. Uh, so if you haven't read a city manager's report in a while, I encourage you to, uh, to read the next one. Uh, it, uh, it just went out, and, um, it's located on our city website. That concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, uh, city manager, for that thorough report. City attorney's report?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Protem, and council members, very briefly, we will be going to the City Attorney League Conference the remainder of this week. I will bring you any, uh, new developments, any new laws, anything that's pertinent, and, uh, give you either a written or an oral report on those. We expect to pick up a lot of, um, discussions and input on, uh, especially the new cannabis regulations, uh, that are about to be put in. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, city attorney, uh, for that thorough report as well. That brings us to reports and comments from council members who did not speak earlier. Uh, we start with Councilmember Gaiba?
Thank you. Well, on the eighteenth, uh, there's, uh, past several weeks, there's a lot of events to attend, Lake Elsinore and Santa Cento Watershed Summit. Also, the two thousand and eighteen Housing Conference, I was able to attend. Uh, also, uh, and I saw Mayor Protembaka there shortly, the ribbon-cutting and open house at the Lamb Canyon landfill for the Miriam V. Ashley Education Center. If you haven't had a chance to get up there with your children, your friends, I'd highly recommend it, it's just off Highway seventy-nine between Santa Cento, uh, and, um, Beaumont. It's, uh, so they have a stoplight, you can get in there, okay. On the twenty-first, I had another one of my Javas with Jeff, very well attended. Um, the, it was a stream of folks coming and going, so we didn't have just one clump. Starbucks on Paris is, uh, Starbucks on Paris is pretty busy, and so therefore, it was always good that we had little groups in the little corner we could discuss. We were able to initiate a couple of CRMs from that meeting. And I do want to put this out to the staff and the city manager, because one of their requests there, and they were getting data on it, was please consider the, a dog park on Redlands Boulevard where the horse, you know, the horse trail start where they have the trailer and everything. I guess that's a current dog park, but it's not, no grass, no nothing, anything, so I would encourage the staff and any one of the councilmembers to reach out to these folks. I'll get their names and more detail on it for you. They really would like a dog park out there and a good one. It wouldn't take much to do that. That's a, parks probably want to consider that as well. I'll get you in touch with the right people if you're interested. My next java with Jeff is this coming Saturday on Cinco de Mayo Day, and appropriately, it will be at Jose's on Ironwood and Pigeon Pass. So, please come out. You know, we, we have very good, and by the way, coffee and breakfast is on me. So, and those who have attended mine and the staff that's attended mine, they really enjoy the fact that I, I feed them, right, Rick? They, they get, they get fed as well, because if you're my guests, I'm gonna feed you, okay? Paris, the twenty-first was also the Paris City Sixth Annual Community Health Wellness Fair. I've been attending that since I was elected. On the twenty-fifth, Riverside County Student Academic Awards Recognition. It's always a pleasure to see the awards from the students. Then, I had the honor and the pleasure and the distinction of attending the, and our mayor was there as well, so he'll probably give you additional information. The Naleo National Policy Institute on Workforce Development in New York. That was from the twenty-sixth to the twenty-eighth. I'll make a couple of quick comments about that. First of all, I've never attended one of them. They are a Latino organization, which in itself is meaningless, because when I went there, it was a full scholarship, by the way, so I didn't spend any, hardly any of the city's money whatsoever. They fully scholar, the full scholarship took care of the, the flight arrangements, the hotel, and the incidentals, and the meals. But when I got there, I was really impressed with the fact that it's a very nonprofit, I mean, I mean, nonpartisan, very level-headed group of people for the past several, I think twenty-some odd years they've been doing this conference, and you didn't have to be a Latino to attend it. The statistics and the data from workforce development that they were sharing with us, and it was a packed field, right, Mayor? It was a packed two days, nonstop, and, but most of, the information was really workforce information. They highlighted the statistics and the data on the Latino community, just like they would other groups, and they had them in there. So, that was highlighted, but even they admitted that this is not about Latinos, this is about our residents, our people, our public in general. And a, a special surprise while I was there, and for me, it's always a surprise, I taught for fifteen years, and one of the high schools I taught at was Harupa Valley. So, I'm having breakfast and one of the young ladies who worked for Naleo for the past several years looks at me and says, "Did you teach at Harupa Valley?" I said, "Yes." "Mr. Guy, but that's you, right?" "Yeah." So, and she still Facebooks with a lot of the students that still keep in touch with me and everything, and it was kind of a nice thing to see what happened to a student who graduated in two thousand and ten and now is in a very influential position, and all the way in New York. So, I thought that was rather, that was exciting to me, that I would run, I'd run into my students in New York, you know? It's, it's kind of a good thing. So, that, and, and I'm sure the mayor will give you more information on that, I'm not gonna belabor it. Coming up pretty soon, oh, special note, Music Changing Lives is a nonprofit that's been working in the entire area, Riverside County and San Bernardino County, Redlands. WR Cog is gonna be recognizing as a community involvement recognition at the WR Cog Special Meeting, so, that we're having coming up. So, I, I thought I'd throw that out there, because that's a pretty cool thing. They also, Music Changing Lives are having their, their, I forget what they call it, but it's a, the presentation with all their students and music and everything on the fifth. And then I think it is on the sixteenth or seventeenth, our, our other nonprofit in the city community now will be having their grand gala, so maybe we can get that posted for our nonprofits. I've just asked that, if you'd like me, I'll get you the exact dates and times and where they're at. The second of May, I'll be attending the SCAG Future Communities Forum out in the desert, and then the next two days after that, the third and the fourth will be the SCAG General Assembly. Now, I, I sit on the transportation, so I'll be busy on that one. I also am on the, on the major council for that, and we do have the Protem who'll be voting on behalf of the city while they're there. On the fifth, there will be a Jazz Festival here, so please, if somebody else will probably speak of it, it'll be here for the city. Looking forward to that on Cinco de Mayo Day. And then I will be attending an Eagle Scout Ceremony at the museum, March Museum, on the sixth. And then by that time, we'll be coming around to the next announcements and I'll fill you in on those as well. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Marquez?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Excuse me, while we had a walk this Saturday, the Daisy Walk, recognizing the PDSD veterans out there at the cemetery, it was very successful. Next year, we'll, we'll try to make it citywide and also include Riverside at the same time. We had some representatives from Tomacula, Marietta, San Bernardino, and it was nice. We had also, Assemblymember Medina came out to, to support us, which was nice. And need to come out and attend with the military events like that. It was really nice to go through the cemetery and, and see and hear from a lot of the, the veterans, what they did for our country and what we're facing now through our PDSD situation. Secondly, I attended the Law Enforcement Awards Dinner with the chief. It was very, like every year, the last two years, we had some officers presented with some awards, Officer Brooks, and there were some, several other ones. And it was just fantastic to see all the, the officers from various agencies out there receiving these awards. It's just, it's unbelievable. Also, I attended the Moreno Valley College, the Cyber Mayor's Cup that was on. Unfortunately, no local high school teams won the Mayor's Cup. It was awarded to, I believe, was John North High School, but some of these kids are unbelievable. They get on that computer and they can crack your password codes, it's just like hackers do, but these are high school students that are learning this in class, how to, to work with the, with these companies, Google. They had North Rub there, watching these kids work. It was beautiful. It was beautiful. They invited me to, to be present and also gave out some awards to our local high school and teams there. And other than that, one more comment. As individuals spoke about me being at a tent, I resent the whole city. I can go anywhere I want to in the city, but they failed to tell you that I was across the street too. But their people wouldn't talk to me. But they don't have pictures of that, but they also have planning commission members, committees from our city walking over there too, but that's never mentioned. So, yes, I was at the booth, I'm not denying it. I knew I was gonna get pictures taken, big deal, but I was, I'm always all over the city on weekends, and I knew that for sure if I attended that, I mean, up to the tent, somebody would be taking pictures. Same individuals have been stalking me for the past three weeks, but you know what? To their own what they want to do, so. I'm out and about on weekends and I go wherever I can to see what's going on in this city. That's all I have, Mayor.
I'll just go ahead and share as well. For the National Day of Prayer, yeah, the National Day of Prayer, I want to say, is tomorrow, so to remind everyone that it is tomorrow. The Jazz Festival is this Saturday from twelve to seven PM, and it will be at the Moreno Valley High School Football Stadium, so that's another great event that we're gonna be having as a city. And then, like Councilmember Gaiba mentioned, I was also attending the Naleo Conference for the workforce development. It was really a, a great, two-day, action-packed conference with a lot of different speakers and, you know, they talked about a lot of the various barriers that not only Latinos have, but also other groups as well in the community. They also talked about reentry programs and those kinds of things, and I know that we have issues with that as well i- in our city. And I specifically liked the incentives that they talked about of providing in cities, and they also talked about paid internships and apprenticeships, and I really liked that we're already in the forefront of that, you know, and so I thought that was pretty cool in, in many ways, but you know, there's still ways that we can still grow, so I look forward to working with you all and bringing some things. I also want to mention, like Ms. Munoz mentioned for the, she's part of the Voices for Children, the CASA program, we will be having a Foster Care Month proclamation at the May fifteenth council meeting. We were trying to put it on the May first, but it's just it was so busy with so many other proclamations, but we want to really devote some time, especially on May fifteenth, to really honor our foster youth for the Foster Care Month, and in honor of that, on May twentieth, we will be lighting the M blue for the color of foster care. That concludes my comments. Councilmember Carrera?
Thank you. Just a couple of comments here. Over on Moreno Beach and Cactus, the Waba Grill next door to Cupcake Espresso Bar is now open, if you live over on that side, or if you like Waba Grill, go ahead and check them out, it's a really nice restaurant. Thank you to staff for making that happen, in addition to Hyundai now being open. Also, about two weeks ago, the Legislative Day of Action took place. We actually went up there, a couple of us went up to Sacramento and got to speak to a couple of our representatives, one of them Senator Richard Roth, and a couple of other folks, and a lot of, a lot of movement going on right now in Sacramento, you know, new bills being introduced, a lot of talk about transportation, a lot of talk about homelessness. So, maybe, I think we can expect a few bills coming down pertaining to those topics. Also, the Senior Center, there was a volunteer recognition. This was this past weekend, and we actually got to go out there, and I believe his name is Michael, so he was the Volunteer of the Year. And afterwards, I stuck, I stuck around for a little while and I was playing pool with some of the, the elders there in the room. It was, it's packed, so I had a, I had a fun time with them and, you know, they got to talk to me, share a little bit of their stories with me, so that was nice. And I also walked into the room where they would teach guitar, they have guitar lessons, and I walk in and once they're done, and the instructor asks, you know, "Who are you? Are you authorized to be in here?" Because there, everyone has to be a certain age to be in the class. And then I gave him my card and he said, "Oh, oh, I, I didn't know who you were." So, I was in there playing guitar with them for a little while as well. Also, this past weekend, this is my final comment, the Peace Rally took place up in Sunny Meat Ranch off of, it's actually right in the Lakeview Plaza Marketplace, up on the north side of the city, and I was supposed to go to New York with my fellow council members, however, I canceled that trip. I was a part of the planning, going into this peace march, and I just, I couldn't not be there. So, I, I know I'll get another chance to go to New York, and the rally, I mean, it was successful. We walked through, we had two groups, we walked through a large part of Sunny Meat Ranch, Sunny Meat Ranch Parkway and also Parkland, so we walked through the neighborhood. And I just want to thank all the pastors, all the churches who were involved. I mean, they were the main drivers of the event, and it's all about peace and unity, and the, the main reason why that took place is because of what happened with the two brothers up in the marketplace. So, that, that was the mission, to try to bring unity and peace and nonviolence here to Moreno Valley, and I'm really happy, earlier in the council meeting, we recognized the National Day of Prayer, and we had several pastors in here, and I love seeing that, so I was just glad to be a part of that, and, you know, moving forward, I hope more organizations will start working together, unifying, collaborating, and, you know, moving Moreno Valley forward. So, that's all I have for today, and everyone have a good night.
Mayor Protem Baca?
Okay, I want to start off by saying that this past weekend was really a busy weekend, we had lots of events, and of course, we can't be at all of them at all, all the time. But I did attend the Unity Day at Sunny, Sunny Meat Middle School, and I was very impressed to see about two hundred students there, both male and female, with their parents, and they had different vendors, and it was, it was a wonderful event. You had the young kids very involved with, with the majority of the event, they're very vocal, very creative, and happy to be there, and I was, I can, I, there's no words to say how proud I am of the students that are making that change in their life and making education the focus and the priority in their life. Next, like many have mentioned already, this Saturday, Cinco de Mayo, we're gonna have our Second Annual Jazz Festival at Moreno Valley High School, so please think of attending. Bring your lawn chairs, your umbrellas, your sunscreen, and I don't know what else you can take there, I know they're gonna have food and, and drinks, so just be there, take it easy, jazz is very relaxing, and we're gonna have our students performing, and I know that we'll have a lot of the parents from, from around the city there, but be there, and it's at twelve o'clock noon, and it goes until seven PM. So, there'll be different schools performing at different hours. Please come, and I, I assure you that you won't be disappointed. It's a great event, be there. Second Annual Jazz Festival. Thank you.
Thank you, and I think we set a new world record. We are about to end the council meeting at six fifty-seven PM. This meeting is adjourned.